Keep service line and then electricity. Some of these that are responsible for heat and electricity is on our, it's on all of the buildings around us. I just wanted to direct six to four of you guys before I have a budget saving here, ask about the saving. The two buildings that I already have given them, found, sent to the state, they're all over the city. Lights that are in the front of the mirrors, being charged or if it doesn't want to sit down in the front of the daily days because it would be so long on you in total. Again, the intended, having that department that is in charge of electric bills, could be an idea in theory, but they would monitor where they're spending. It could go on and on and on, but of course, they've got to be many bills, it's a part of the situation. So, they have no idea whether their bills are high or not, or just kind of, they have their situation up here in Nashville. And it tells them, well, being seven percent, so we don't know. So, this will, even if someone did find that they had a meeting with the official page, you could still have other buildings in your house too. Because they don't have any budget to fix again, it would have to be, you know, down to one, for buildings. So, I just wanted to bring that to the conversation.
And I'll tell you, for example, for Mr. Bridge Restaurant City Ground Pass, and a specific restaurant would put the heating system in at the police station. It's a super duper inefficient savings, but they didn't put it on where it's heat, which means it might access all things in the food bar. And by a little longer than that, you can see that fluctuation and know what it does. So, we could, you know, maybe do a lot of options, and there was that, like, I think that.
Well, he needed some stuff I would be more willing to do that with this industry or this school, would make us save a lot of money on the way to here. They can begin to rule back with the schools, and that would have happened now in, sitting in a city that would only have that forest.
Especially where you can see the whole, it's all accurate, putting stuff up there, you know, actually working on this. Yes, and so.
And consolidating doesn't mean that's out of line. I'm just going to go forward with my current intent there. He's giving you more, he's giving you more information than you needed to. I mean, maybe it confused you, but go for it. That was not the intent. The intent is not to, it's to allow and have transparency. Everybody is on the same page and then our job, every one of us is paying these bills. So it's just a matter of managing the information.
Can we just re-craft a proposal list that we understand? So the proposal currently is that Bill isn't even at the list. But how it's currently budgeted is in a state for at least this year. Since we're three, we're nine percent down in the department in which it's created. So if state money is, we may request that to break it down. To have town hall, nickel's library, library all time separate now so we can see that better. Right? And then you're going to try and, uh, you're going to validate either go back or quote and then take a look at it and then prove efficiency. Can you look at what it does?
That's what I thought it was called.
Sounds good, sounds good. Yeah, so any, any word?
And one thing I agree with today is that tonight was, we used to have an energy committee that we haven't had in years. We used to have a safety committee that we hadn't had in years. And maybe it's time to get those over and in, you know, for things like this, especially the energy because we would pick up on some of the problems.
You know, the only question I'd say is to be a question follow-up, can you break down that you have a heat line being wired, can you go through three different categories, library, museum, on the call, order track?
And there were four, eight, twelve, twelve, eleven, twelve.
It did like twelve bills, eleven, twelve bills from different places.
Yeah, we've got the south station for our two.
Yeah, so that's a good issue.
That's, I guess, you know, there's a lot more than twelve bills for like, I'm guessing.
The level that's been low is streetlights, blinking lights, just cam lights in people's yards that we are paying for their gravity with, because we found out we didn't deal with the streetlights in case.
We did the information for the streetlight change from, uh, and also for the solar committee, they require that, uh, bills, theory, but I don't know where the others were.
Yeah, there is utility tell that has four lights, there's four lights that, that we have.
When we went with the U A D, we had definitely realized that additional lights a couple behind that was powerful bills, and so there was twelve twenty-two, that when the lighting up came was dry, was like we were paying for it. We as a term, so we tried to look.
And, and so like the streetlight, that was just one line up in, in utility, I think there's, is that what you meant, twelve, eight?
No, uh.
No, we did the solar meetings and those were just events in case that they, they see the evidence.
Right.
There were twelve cats, then there were twelve little, and there were twelve.
That's true.
The city of.
Yeah, that is true. Yeah, because there are, um, there's, there's like thirteen hundred dollars in this streetlights or thirteen eighty something. And then there was six other separate lights that two of them are recognized and there's like four, one, three. I still thought you got a question before, but it, um, it blocked.
Because it would be nice to be able to have.
Well, tracking, so like I said, for all the buildings, Lisa's been tracking since she started in October last year, uh, primarily on, yeah, but.
Can the question, can you, can you probably go down?
Yes, I.
Looking at, looking at the power setting, having double because of the eight percent increase, if you probably turn that up a little bit.
Well, the question, the question remains now, not the process, but the, the, the long, long time, the road we have, so we can base it. The question, I mean, adjusting the location.
That's true.
That's, that's.
Because, you know, we're, we're just doubling it, but, you know.
So that's what we do every year.
Oh, that's, that's true, because the lighting bill is kind of easy because they sit to double it, but the, the oil and the propane, we need the actions to figure out the difference of what we paid last and what we paid this year to figure out. But, and, and any, but maybe we will, with the other things, it's, it's, we can, the actions will double it by eight to sixteen, or maybe we're doing it to twelve.
We know what the actions are, I mean, we know what the actions.
Well, that's, that's what we're doing, because we don't have, wasn't really, because only have.
But even then, the action is on, you would tell it goes to sixteen to twenty-six cents, maybe it's an increase, and it only goes to twelve, and then it'll go back down to something much more reasonable, so I'm not so sure, doubling it until the end.
That's what we, we're just telling them, like, oh.
Of course they do, they, they, they're on the side of things, which they would say double, you know.
But you also, but you also say we want each building, each one, so we know exactly what we're gonna, that's best way to drive it, and adjust after, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you should see your, extend your, right, your usagees and then determine.
Like, so, her, her trackings buildings, that was what brought to our attention, the fact that the museum is eight thousand dollars, moving here to be around, so it.
For three hours, I would just say.
Fifty degrees here, but it's, it's just things like that, it gives us power to make great decisions because we're gonna turn down the, the museum when no one's in there. And then you see electric heat to kind of make out, and we'll see how it works out.
On, on, or still.
Yeah, so, like, like I said, it's like.
You know, that's a round table building that maybe you update, the duct was split, it's got the corporate money on the coil. But the duct was split, or put in twenty years ago.
Actually, they're only eight years old. What's the number?
Maybe a few are, but I don't know, someone had bigger residential work, they were put in a perfect. But even at eight years old, they're way behind times.
Yeah, and, and they're not sized properly, forever the use, that were technically important. So just to be clear, those will come to the V W for us to track them, and if we see any trends that are concerning, we bring them up to the department, that's the monitoring the budget. So then, we'll use that from here from now.
Now we're gonna have three sign-ups, we're gonna have the department, you, the supplier.
Uh, yes, we will go to the department.
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna let them stay, I don't know, they're good, you know, in some cases, we can let them stay.
Yeah, excellent. And if we get data, I'm gonna be careful.
Yeah, it's okay.
You ready to move on? I think we're gonna go to that.
He wants to hear the question.
Yeah.
Uh, no, that was a big thing, I was just looking for guys on that one, so I'll find it to you.
Though, did you hear anything?
I didn't hear anything.
Oh, yeah.
No, I was told you were talking, they were coming.
They like to talk to you and watch you.
Yeah, data protocol, uh, if you give me their contact information.
Okay. Cause all we did, that, probably the word that we can tell is look at the screen, sit it on, and then we went back and put it in, it's been two weeks now.
We know what we're saying. Yeah.
Are we going to number one? What is it?
I think.
The first one.
Mr. Williams.
I don't know what's saying.
No, you're right.
Okay.
First of all.
Okay. Very, my name is Brian, we're, I own two buildings in town, both residential market buildings, and then store at Pittsburgh, one of them's, uh, Level Church Street, actually that, that patient as well, actually, like something with Main Street, uh, Boston. With the trash searched over, um, we didn't get a barrel at Level Church Street. And, uh, Susan, Susan, and she, the Highland Park, they were based at the loading point for a couple of months until I came to have this conversation. Uh, I've owned Level Church Street for three years, I've got three barrels out there, historically thirty-five gallon barrels, and I've personally bought them two, uh, building at my time, didn't have them hurt. Obviously, you made a barrel fit all three of those, and, uh, the other building, I've got a full six yard, I don't know, I can't remember which, uh, container, it's waste management, it costs three thousand dollars a year to retain that, that container, that's never fully, it's cleared over the hill, and they, they had it twice, twice a while. And, that, Level Church Street, um, I bought that property from Lynn and John Merrill, who don't live in that case, my tenant base is, uh, elderly, I guess you could say that, my rents are about thirty percent below market, and they're barely the Boston now, um, I can't, I'm not gonna go for it, I can actually put a three thousand a year container on that property. And, uh, and, you know, I'm hoping that I can, uh, figure out how to get that property over, I don't think I need one of the one, like I said, I've never seen one, two of the store barrels out there, and I'd like to figure out how to get that done.
I wish you would have brought that up, but it's still here.
So, yes, I'm there.
Comment. I mean, I know the place next door is all the downstairs.
I know, I'm just having a process during fourteen.
Uh. The guidance I was told was that we only did residential, and so when we went through and did the barrel selection, it was all a commercial property that went through. So, that was the basis for that, I understand, it's still, it's going, um. But there were, I want to say it's probably seven properties that we delivered, the camper again, to do with the land, was hard to, um, you know, find alternatives, I, I don't know.
Have we differentiated between a rented house and a rented apartment? The building has several apartments, it's considered commercial, whereas, on a different level, commercial, whereas a house is being rented. Gets it down, do you see as long as that, the difference?
So, the only commercial buildings that we deliver in trash cans to are ones that are, are occupied. We also use it, Officer, County Street, for example, the U S B points, uh, posts like that.
So, I, I think I started, I was saying, fashion, my, 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 it is, well, I'll comply, uh, how it's twenty-sixty, it's just being some commercial, uh, under the store, with, with, so it's a little bit of technical, uh, in this case, and, uh, and that's why.
Yeah, please, so, that's their decision to make, um, if you're just going to say or you're just.
I think the heart of this is, you know, I mean, I, I would be no good, like, what happened, would you say to the others, if you have the oath of, you know, like, in other, uh, buildings, are, are you worried? I think, I think, possibly, I appreciate that, that's what we did.
So, so, uh, I've been there since, uh, I've owned it for three years, this particular building, um, I've lived there since a year ago, August, um, like I said, we've been using our own barrels there, uh, for three years, I've got three of them out there, and there's only ever been, so we use them each, uh, they're thirty-five gallon barrels, um, they've been using the lower barrel for, since it started, uh, that's not for every week as well, I don't see what I'm changing, if you might, Frank, so I'm, I'm not asking multiple characters as one of them, um, and, uh, and it is my business as well, so, it is just a book, you know, you guys said you're talking about energy, and this is the conversation, but, um, you know, my, what I was talking as well, I mean, all my thoughts are about that, and, uh, and the reason why I've been trying to marry, for decades, the age of my tenants, is because I'm not going to, for three thousand, obviously, you know, I'm gonna push it right through, you know, trying to maintain, you know, some, some level of decency in terms of rents, where I'm sure you listen, there are all rents going up, these people are twenty-five percent below market, and if I have to, 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 to three thousand dollar bill on top of my operating cost, it's gonna break through, so, and that's just what it's been.
Since he's on the Rocky Pike, we qualify for it, I'm starting from seven thousand, so we're on one barrel, because that's where, what you just said, if you have a tiny building that's on the Rocky Pike.
So, it's a primary business for this state owner, was the only ones that we delivered to, so there were ones that were holding family units for, that were on the number of, or no one can stay.
So you live in that, no?
Yeah, I've been there for, I've been there for a year and, uh, four months, three months.
So what do you have in mind, what do you think?
Well, um, I don't see that in my, my future, uh, if you might, Frank, I think, you know, life happens, obviously, uh, my, my, no, I, I spent, yeah, my time in Jersey, and then my time in New York, uh, I worked for straight out of Maine, that was, was fascinating, and, uh, you guys were talking about your energy committees, and, uh, I'm gonna finish off my career, five, ten years, and I have to, here as well, in New York. So, yes, eventually, for the next five years.
So, we, we, I guess what I've learned, you know, is that trans, uh, that's, that's what I was going with that.
I know, and I go, and I, I got time, so.
No, you know, when you have a doctor back there, you're, you're, you're.
I did, and, and for the same reason, because, you know, um, I told Lynn, she picked this, she picked me and my ex-wife to own this building, and, you know, for five decades, and I told her, I was going to keep people out, and I was, uh, barter, just, just jack, I said, and I've got, and, 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 so, run the rates, cut costs, or the math, and it comes up, it was a huge building, and, you know, we've got the barrels, and a couple of recycling containers that are, we've spent, oh, with the old toilets, uh, so that's, that's those, and, uh, like I said, for three years, we've been putting out the barrels, and, uh, and then, and then, I mean, obviously, I have the office, for that COVID, it's a lot of things that are going, that are failing for fifty years, so, you know, you can kind of imagine the, the difference there. You know, just in the face of all, uh, this is, you know, it's just a needless build, really, and, uh, and something, I mean, if I have to, I'll do, but, uh, this is just how the shame, and it's not all about senior citizens, actually, I'm living there as well, so, because, because I'm not a bear across, they are.
And what, let us talk about a little bit, give you a call tomorrow, you know, what we can run with, let you know this, that's okay, you have a building in New York.
That's right, I, I, you have another building, I own one seventy-three Main Street, uh, was making it, and that, uh, I have a beautiful container with a waste manager.
Seventy-three, uh?
That's right.
Is that within the law, uh, one seventy-three within the law?
No, that's, that's actually, that's on the right.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So, and I've, I've owned that since nineteen, I'm sorry, nineteen, uh, two thousand thirteen, so almost ten years, they are, and, uh, the difference there, um, is that the turnover over that time has helped, you know, to actually keep rents current, and, uh, you know, along with energy prices spiking and everything else, uh, that's going, including this behavior, by the way, it's almost doubled when we started ten years, or ten years ago, whatever it was.
You're not asking for that, are you?
No, no, this is, but this actually, I have another three thousand, and it came.
That would be a good one.
Exactly, Billy, that, that's right.
All right, let us talk about it a little bit, and I'll give you a call tomorrow, or maybe next year.
That's fine, okay.
Appreciate it, thank you so much. First couple, you want to come in? Brandon, you want to come to the desk and we'll talk about the letter? You got a copy of it?
If you say yes, it's up to me.
Okay. This is a resident, folks, the private department, issues that we're going to talk about.
Thank you, wait, I was, I apologize, I was on vacation, then came back to get a call in, so. It wasn't a bad one, it was.
You want a copy of the P D?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh, so, I think, you know, the, the letter states, I, my apartment, the gentleman lives directly across the street from fire station, um. We have talked several times, even before we entered the building, when it was under construction, uh, that he had issued the lighting, uh, I've explained to him several times that unfortunately, we don't know when a call can come in, and I can't safely have people respond to a dark fire station, uh, I, when the electrician is still on scene, uh, the ones that are right across from his house are the floor lights on the base, uh, when the electrician is still there, I can't enable them now as much as possible, uh, obviously, we're trying to give a name, as we do meet the lighting organs, that nothing leaves our property, and it's all, you know, dark sky, down lighting, uh, we didn't look into or spring for the yellow feature, uh, unfortunately, so the building is timed, uh, meaning they come on at, right now, I think it's like seven o'clock, uh, at night, because it was set to the summer schedule, uh, and then they go off at like six in the morning. There's only two zones, basically, of lighting, one is all the lights that are attached to the building, so the eight bays, uh, and then the three entrances, uh, and then the other zone, zone two, is the parking lot lights, the post lights that you see up, uh, unfortunately, I think it's the building lights that is more concerned though, because they're close to his second level, uh, but even if we shut building lights off, we utilize parking lot lights, then that would, would leave any, any bays for the front entrances or, or anything, so, uh, I have no sort of compromise we can offer, and still operate safely.
What about the water issue?
That we've talked to him about, I think that part is also, versus, status is gonna be. Status is gonna be until we look for our next basic test, getting into the inside of what we're doing.
So, the, you mentioned, uh, music, uh, so we have a little blue box in the bays that you guys listen to while they're working on trucks, they're doing truck checks, uh, that will be discontinued, uh, we have installed a Bluetooth receiver in the bays that they can play music over the bay speakers, and eliminate volume, uh, that I control, and if they're not actively in the bays working, then it disconnection that's on, so I think that issue has been resolved.
And I, I would also think that, based on the, uh, conversations, that if they're able to do a level of maintenance, everything inside is better, so I would help with those that were screaming.
Yeah, it's not the noise of the light, night, going to like, you know, the light shift, that then.
Yeah, sure, sure, the only thing that my guys do after dark is, uh, relax and respond to calls, so they get all their daily chores, it's not fun during the day, they run chainsaws during the day, you know, I'm sure on a Saturday, you know, every Saturday, they run chainsaws from one of our engines, you know, it's only for five minutes, just to make sure that the, the piece of equipment is maintained, uh, that they put it away in the back truck that could, um.
Do you think this fire station is any worse than the last one?
Worse how?
Like lighting is, like, that, or lighting that he's getting now, and it's the thing now, the large guy, the, the.
So, in the old station, you did have a big, uh, six inch quartz spotlight that would shine the back parking lot, uh, that was on, and the ice, uh, and the portable buildings were side by side, no lights on, I honestly thought that that spotlight put off a more of a disturbing light to the neighbors than whatever we have on the station now.
I mean, I want to make questions, the fire station was there when he built that?
Yes, the, the original fire station.
Right, and so police station too, probably a bit.
Him and I, and this kind of, uh, not Lloyd, but he brought up in this letter, uh, so I've talked to a couple of realtors, uh, of different things, and I know them, I own them, I own them, other realtors in town, uh, so, picking their brain, the fact that there's a fire station across from anybody's house doesn't really drive the property value down, the only thing it may do is limit the people that want to move there, right? So Chris may not want to move next to a fire station, but that doesn't make your house worth anything else, um, I've had that conversation with him, but, obviously, people that are strong, that's strong opinions.
Would, would a blackboard shade do the trickery, and is that?
He, uh, well, I don't think he moved in neighbors' windows, but, uh, he does have shades in his window, uh, I don't, I don't turn black on, uh, but the, the only other thing in the, the letter was the, you know, emergency lights, um, if it's two o'clock in the morning, I, I instructed my guys to limit, you know, putting the emergency lights on, just not necessarily to, you know, the streets kind of roll up here, you know, midnight or keystone, uh, well, I don't know, but, uh, but if it's third day, or, you know, this time of night, and this car, then, you know, we, we need to respond to the emergency alarm.
Uh, I, I, one time, I was working, at nine o'clock, I'm doing a station check, and I ran a chainsaw, and did the truck check, and, and a little later, no, that, none of you would call me, that's fine, and one of them playing, and I listened to him, and, like, they were setting the chainsaw at nine o'clock, and I had me, and told Kevin, and he explained the noise, the, the time, and, right, she has to go to the other side of the station and do a G S A, so, they, they're not, it's, it's not just one of these, too late, is that our cat, um, I mean, the board would be paying, just to show an offering of, of, um, blackboard, they had shades, that, that, other cat, we came out, we were not even, as you can, the chainsaws don't run until four o'clock, as they only do it in the middle of the night, and it was.
It was on wheels, when it was running?
Yeah, no, exactly, it was, anyway, they tried to park the person, the same one, I complain, but, like, you know, they, it's parking, they can, you know, I don't know.
I, I, I would suggest, to, to be with the main court of the rest of the, as far as the question, I would suggest that we send the light, the light, the light, the lights probably, they are probably be able to approach the town, and you can't, you can't allow that, because, because we're going to make this.
And he, he has shades, maybe even a blackboard, if he puts just a blackboard shade, which is very strong, you know, they, they should, they, uh, they buy more light, and maybe that will do the trickery, if the tents, I don't know, they would do anything else, to be honest with you, they are not, they're, she's, they have to get it with.
Yeah, but I think we should often, if they don't block out, possibly, you know, their usable glass.
Well, they're not that, should we, they're not gonna have the physical elements on it.
I mean, very difficult to lock, yes.
Just.
And I'm not hanging, right?
No, no, they're, they're.
Yes.
Just.
And I'm not hanging, right?
No, no, they're, they're.
Okay.
Thank you. By the way, maybe the question.
Thank you.
For everyone attending, for us, for the guys that are, it's, it's just the church, and, separate in the woods, and so, whatever it is, it's, it's.
Shoot, back on the ship, shoot the Tommy, so maybe the lawyer will, I know the lawyer pissed, but we, I actually talked to him about the law, and he's not happy with what we told.
I asked, we had, like, delivered two different areas, and I think that, I said, no, that's the best place to be.
Different, the bear, the lion, that's the problem, bringing this husband, I don't really, it's, it's.
Doing the testing for that, and maybe I'm wrong.
Well, see, but, yeah, sure, that's the point.
But sure, you know, that's what the goal, we can, we can start watering the animals.
Yes.
Me.
Does he not, like, you say, you've already talked about the water, the, the, the.
And we have some response to that.
Yeah, well, it's.
It's not just.
That's what we're basically, of, when, when.
I don't know. The water actually, it didn't, not yet.
Remember, around, she's got a, a war, I spent, I've got anything back from, from a test, like, across the street.
No, last time I called, it, it was still, maybe a couple days. So let's just, can I, can I?
What is being done? He's been able to go back and start testing.
Again, maybe seven hours when they were gonna start, but they did the one sample.
They did, we asked them to do the plasma immediately.
Yep.
They gave me their response, and they're saying like six weeks or something.
All of that.
You know, it's hard. Yeah, I mean, that's what we're in a kind of base of circle.
Well, and D E S wants an answer about, they were one of the ones who were supposed to deliver water to, because the situation, they haven't seen appropriate. So we pushed it from the same point at first.
Then the E S can get tired of waiting.
They want an answer about the water by the end of the month of.
We can destroy by the company.
Yes, and they get a case of slap.
And that took place, that'd have been cheaper to put in a system than to put water.
Yes.
Because the water goes there at one point, and then goes to all the areas. And it already has some kind of, some form of treatments, it's one there, you got, you know, what it did. So it could be just upgraded or something. But I was trying to, because I didn't know the cost of the expense of putting your waters, and then have them come back and say, water's fine. You know, so.
D E S just wants to know and follow up, so they've got the E S for D E S.
Well, let's call Eastern, again, I'll say, the results. And then we're there waiting to see what can return, and got all the letters and everything, it's, I'm gonna start.
I've got, yeah, all the response letters, I've got a few more, suppose I sent out another.
Okay.
And, and the one, he wants to start reaching out to them next week, so I'll give him what I have.
Okay. New business. Like I said earlier, I think we ought to go back, you know, we don't want to start thinking about an interview. Or if we get, then a safety committee again. And the reason the safety committee is a lot of buildings down at First Aid Kids and things like that that have not been maintained. Because, no, let's check. We'll do the usual suspects, most committees.
Do you want to turn the example of ones?
Oh, let's get the, they use our words. Let's go first. Go.
Okay. Kingston Days Committee, we, we, committee, committee, we had last Thursday, had about twenty five people there that had seen the bus in the carriage town on Town Road. Stayed in Facebook, that was in confusion about the start, had some places listed at six thirty, seven thirty, but be that as it may, twenty five, about twenty five people intended. The group decided to form a steering committee. And they are Stacy Deion, Greg Malone, Robbie Augusta, and the, the, Costa, Costa. Becky and Greg Costa, they're a new team committee that they signed up, and Kathy Walsh also signed up. So there were six individuals that were formed the steering committee. They have chosen Stacy Deion as their chair. They will be meeting next week for preliminary meeting to start getting organized, and then meeting on the fifteenth of December, open to the public for public. And start organizing companies of the structure of the proposed Kingston Days twenty twenty three. And it was just, and they, and they, they gave us their name, address, and phone numbers. And emails to connect them, and we got another couple recently moved into town that had reached out, sent one in the email, which I forwarded to Stacy, responded, forwarded to Stacy. They'll get some minutes in the meeting to, to, to get some more information. So it has a protocol, it responds to our consideration. Maybe I haven't taken a day to do this yet, but it was a great turn. I'd like to publicly thank Charlie Witzegio, the chair of this fire station, Danny Jones, Jack, Donna Del Gore, Charlie Wu, Victoria, and the chicken resources. The, so, and, 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 all the best job. But it was a tough job because they didn't have the capability, it was the biggest problem. And so hopefully, this, this committee will not be as stressful on the committee. And I hope that those seasoned executives will work with us again as we move forward with Kingston Days. The other way that we have, I, I want to chat on one of the benefit updates we made this past year. Tuition reimbursement is one of them. We don't, I don't, they need it when a budget is there. And so we need to put something in the budget, and we're sure that comes up. And do, I don't know whether we instituted after the budget is passed, or make it effective January one, I can't remember what we decided. Because there may be more to individuals interested, taking a big interest, and I wasn't sure that it would be in effect, because we don't have any budget as well, by doing the twenty twenty three.
What, what is the, I'm the tuition, reimbursement complaint, how would you be going? Is it annual work order for signing down tuition?
And we also affect a percent of the cost of tuition will be paid through college courses, and led into their current job, trucking. For the town, for further job experience and abilities of employees. In all cases, tuition benefits shall only be provided for taking course rates to see one better, as long as budget and funds are available. And what we have talked about as a group is that we would allocate hundred, two, three thousand dollars, and that would be expending. If it went out, we may have to increase it the next year, but it was one of those items that a benefit and, and benefit for being employed by the town in Kingston. If you have, let me finish reading. Requesting reimbursement must be submitted to the swap board and approved prior to registration of course. And these incentives are not automatic, and shall be negotiated with the swap board on a first count, first year basis. So if we had ten, if we had three thousand dollars, ten million dollars, that would do, get a more subjective decision made.
I, I, I think we might have missed a line stating that, you know, because there's difference in policies from SNU versus, you know, what happened.
Yeah, and we did talk about, I don't remember, but I don't remember this, it's been a while since we approached this.
Yeah, I remember when I, I mentioned, like, at the, at the, at the.
This is, we did this year, six months ago, so we need to make it, definitely, it's a different, different thing. We did, we were, I don't know, fifty percent, we don't have a line item, and we need to add a budget, tuition investment.
So for, so, to clarify, this is what the budget committee, which is what we're, we're looking to do, I would suggest, that we call the amount from what needs to be affected budget.
Okay.
I'm sure that we're all, I'm thinking, I probably have it in, you know, in the, I don't know what. And again, it's like the lighting, it's the first year of the rule. We may not have any, we may have five, and we may have to, you know, increase that.
Okay, but we may increase that, so I think this is just a stab. And Robby had it included, so do we make it effective April one, or do we make it effective April one, based on the budget being passed?
I would say April one, because.
For standard. General?
The board that you're in, it's not as nuanced of a budget between the two should be able to.
Yeah, we're working on the rest of the year.
It does, it must certainly be totally determined.
Okay, motion is second, any other discussion? All clear, is that I?
Oh.
All those pushing errors.
And the only other thing I always say with this is keep mentioning the man that we're getting a nice open house.
I think I'm going to consider a little place to do it.
Okay. That was the question.
But, the only thing I have to ask, if you want to go on there, um, the budget's helping me get through the two minutes, like a committee. Uh, Phil passed on a little bit of his aim and, uh, there was any problem there. He, it's been, he didn't know, I suppose, he called for it, and then over this period of time, and then until we get rid of it. And usually guys like us, we made the old one, updated it, you could tell that they were not updating it. Right now, the municipal's not functioning, and they have some of the things that they haven't functioned. It's good. Um, they're, they're not eating units. They don't put out heat, but they're not eating units. So, it's all right. So, the fact that, like, freezing, that it's gonna be better than nothing, if you can definitely take it to fifty, so we can make a decision. Yeah, we had a thought, it was like, uh, twenty years ago, and it was advised to change it, and, uh.
So, if I personally, the, the far pay of the class, if you can be put about, um, let's use our current. So, they, they all, that's gonna be a cost. And maybe we should consider charging that.
It's gonna be a cost, but it's more, it's probably a general money, really, at our game, right?
Cause most, most practices, they're not quite so quick, that's what they're supposed to be doing.
Probably, you need to change that, no way, no. So, that's just, that's, it is. Then maybe we'll run some of that down, cause basically that day, then we need, yeah, so we're trying to get some to get there, um, we're good. The municipal's, temporarily, we've got other, other, um, what were the situations, we're running, and there's, and the long, because they're going over long from the vice, but we're going on the basis. And all that, but we'll kind of be shut off, and cut out. Can get people to talk, totally, uh, so.
It's all, it's still there.
Yeah, so, that's, that's, that's.
Three hours a week.
Well, okay, I'm talking to the meeting, that's what I have, and then, uh, sure, there's a lot of wins, so, um, and we're just gonna say, um, that's all, um, that's it.
Uh, I gave you the language that, the language I was asking, the language that breaks for enforcement language. Uh, they just want to make sure that if it goes up, that, uh, that council isn't seeing issues with it. Yeah, as far as, of course, they're gonna mandate, uh, the gap, uh, of course, that doesn't, the, the word says. Uh, everything is the planning board voting, uh, they, they, the planning board are voting, they're going to go ahead and select them to make sure that the legal barriers there, they have the town clerk. They want the voting record to be on the ballot for any certain articles, so if someone articles were forward, instead of, they usually just say either recommended or not recommended or not recommended, but then the vote counts. The planning board voters, or people that know whether or not certain articles are going to be made in state.
What, 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 what?
No, they're not, they're, they're cost. I'm talking, I'm talking about a year ago, and then at some point, somebody told me, oh, you can't, you can do it, the planning board, that was just a shout out. But, uh, but, uh, so, the planning board, they just wanted to look, what's, I didn't see if there was any hurdles that the speaker, they wanted to get. Have you got that?
The Secretary of State, let's see, I don't, they're, they're, I don't, I don't think so, I think he can't, I don't think, I don't think that's the case, I think, it's like the Secretary of State is not a good person, I mean, now, now, absolutely.
Yeah, uh, this would be, it's a, it's a different, it's a different, it's a different, you know, the thing, if, if you know the rules of the nation, or if it's, slip, or, or if, if you ever will change, uh, you know.
Correct.
I'd say, you know, like, you know, reduce it, it's only articles, there's, so long, so they go right to the end, it wasn't recommended or not.
And I, I, it's, 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 like, sure, that was, like, we talked about, how you made it, and then it was, you, you, it was, that's what it was.
This is what, I mean, it's, we, we, it's, it's, it's. Right, well, uh, the term here for the, uh, I was made of them.
Back, uh, this one, uh, it, it, uh, it was, uh, there are, uh, there are, uh, there are, uh, there are. Yes, they did. Okay. The last day, uh, well, it happened between the two, for months, they didn't have a, uh, office in there, not that they had a register by law. It's what the planning board, something tells, well, now that they do it, because during COVID, they were told to go register, and they did. And supposedly, the planning board, they're gonna hide it, now, that's happened, and we've been calling to others, and said, they'll do it, not, see, that one's there, but we've been refusing to do it, because they had turned it all bigger. And to our shameful face, yes, they did.
I will call upon the President, our, we have plenty more, it's gonna get updated, the files, I have, uh, just all the data, it's, it was around, it's, but, and, 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 but, we have, they have now, well, we, 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 we're supposed to send the trees, they're gonna be refined.
I saw a video, yeah.
That has somebody putting the trees, but, but, that's not, we were, we're, we're.
No, they were treating my cell, but, and I saw, when we had, it was, one, one day, I saw something, but, but, it's not.
But, now that we have just this, when I go for, for, there was trees, they go in April, this year.
But I also found out something else today, when talking to attorney, about getting to, that we can revoke any site land at any time, for, for reasons like that.
Shut them down.
Absolutely.
Well, this, is that three years ago?
Now, I don't think that, uh, I'm sure, uh, I'm.
Want to be a, 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 a.
And he, and he, uh, 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 uh.
Well, we can't, right, almost four days, we revoked another site land in town, I've been doing that, cause unless the town is willing to get to the point where, for Jersey areas, in front of the tribal. And since, like, the CSI, that, that town, you're, site land, they, they still have them, uh, do whatever they want.
I think, I think, uh, there are different attorneys involved, and will, to go into the law. Yeah, but, no, I don't know, um, okay, back to the business, they, they, other new businesses. The, 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 yes.
So we can get that way. We have to have some on right. Forty-three change. So, but that's a top one right now. So it's now we also. You have to talk about.
Well, you have to take a look at it.
I think we should cut.
I would put it there for the later.
Yeah, because this is five of them who we question the meetings. You know.
Do a break down with them and then come back over. This was very. I'm not getting these. Change your own. This is all after. They were saying something like.
Which is what you're.
That's how we want to do it.
Did everybody send the Eagle Scout? Yes.
She was. She believe this.
In your voice, I don't know. Yeah. Actually, I didn't think he was about certain reasons. Excellent. Um, we're gonna talk about.
The service system.
And the budget. Anyway, you're doing it.
Well, I.
If this guy initially before concession, if you need to. Yes, let's keep it still. Let's see. Let's save it.
So, kind of like I guess in the past. You carry the whole world's like when. It involved all the decisions about what you're moving to. It's working. So us three years, so two. So maybe the whole question that they decided you want to do. Maybe because. So the main question we've got inside. What do you want to do with the code? Yes, if I'm all right with that.
Just if you want to invite. Stacy and follow the table. Yes, you know, I'm sure to add. When? Do you guys want to come through? Participate in discussion in particular for any of the members. Wouldn't want to do us really like this. We have a couple. We first came up to the Fed today. In our tech, we've started to. Spend a lot of money this year upgrading our salary structure. Both hourly and the agent. And we've moved from a local from backwards. And lose good talented efficient people to other communities. That's we've been leading up for a number of years. Take the fire police department, for example. We put them through the young officers and the school. They didn't get to stay here for a few years and now they go again as they have that way as well. This board has made a serious effort to elevate those opportunities to be more competitive. To address some of our benefits packages so that we are a good working environment. And then we pay for itself at home. Already getting the rent from the fire department, from the highway department, conservation. And I think the right direction along. Because if we don't institute it as part of our budget procedure. Then if we lose it, then we start falling down again, we start falling down. And if we have a default budget. Cola was cola, I'm not tacted. We don't have a collective body unit anymore. No offense, I do deference, I have been in a sequel attempt. Because I did, I represent the union fifteen years before the schools, it's all on the ball. And I would not like us to go back there. But in order to not do that, we need to be a very, very bad management team. To make sure we have fair and equitable wages and compensated for that. So Cola, maybe this person we should do, I think we should probably go to the Cola. And ask for Cola and the town of mine and maybe then be able to add it to the budget on a regular basis. That's my personal opinion, not. Luckily decided. That, that's right. If we go back there and we talk about this, the Cola's. We basically don't think we should be very honest with you. But that doesn't mean we wouldn't get the following. Cola is pretty good about, you may not be willing to spend the money this year. But they should be pretty good about giving us what the front line. Nothing else that makes them aware of why I'm running. And what's to benefit in the long term for the community.
Some of that cola money is under contract, that would be picked up and default that.
That's correct. Yes, those individuals that have contracts, that would, that would be the case.
Right. And in the Bay of Performance. We won't even took correct up to three percent based on the Oregon mid.
We may not spend it, but we should have.
And I thought Cola being working up to three percent. So if there is no increase. You know, we go into recession and there's.
I, I. I think the first group is four.
That's what we're talking.
I think I think to three, I think change two.
I think it's two, minimum two, and then depending on economic factors or something.
It's like. Yeah, if you have to consider water, you have to have specific enough. We can't just say in the way.
Yeah, I think maybe, I think this is also a count.
So that means you're gonna get three percent every year if it passes no matter what.
Right, that's why I think it should be three percent. I think that you need to get it down.
But last year is ten percent. Coastal living is one, ten, you gave three.
Two, two different towns are giving, one's giving six percent and one's giving seven percent.
It costs a lot.
Yeah.
And I.
When I talked to these people last person at the conference, they were all going, you know, five, six, seven or seven.
It's cold.
It's cold.
Well, that was my point, um, for, you know, percentage this year in the future, we best want to see. Um, CPI, we'd like to have that or something like that.
But if you do that, maybe a lot higher than when it was. I would guess that the town's gonna talk about sixty, seventy, eight percent. Didn't give the salary reason. But we gave everybody about that. I, I already heard that too. It's on my room, it's on my Thursday. I talked to town, still getting their cheap fifty.
Tell me the word was.
Oh, everyone says at a conference or. Well, it's not everybody.
It's the future of.
In the same room, but at lunch, we get into conversations, uh, for the service. One guy said it's pretty cheap, we have fifty thousand on the side, waiter, thirty thousand. You know, he was just, he said, we were losing here, our right and left and our neighboring town because they're all on the line. That's exactly what we were through. And what they said, they were doing, which I didn't intend to change, they got to be open. But they're taking half of that increase and putting it in part of the. Part, I would say part. But part of us, so it's not good, this, they were working on the budget in one year. So that, let's just say that increases ten percent and five goes in this year and another five next. That it will go back in the budget next year, not be made on the part of us. And that's what they were going to relieve, relieve the strain. On the town. Right, we did that. I'll say Pittsburgh was doing it through service.
I, you know, if you think the Cola is a law, then it's a year's work. Correct.
Well, that would work out. Depending on your work, it's one hour, it's one time, one hour, it's all. Every year, what is it? A one time, one hour, two thousand.
Right, that's what I'm saying, you're saying the minimum two percent, that is how the budget committee yourself will set that year only go by.
Well, I mean, I know, but no offense, but I do get maybe. But to get make sure that the ordinance is transparent, then okay, but it won't set the rates.
Uh.
No.
The, we can get recommended rates, but if I don't, maybe can add them cut and then line.
That's true, okay, yes, you're right.
And you keep saying, no, no, it's just a match. So if that year is not needed, you know, everything's great, we don't need it, it's a, you know, the coastal, they will put down this year, so we're not gonna give it.
The only, the only problem with that is, so it's national, the average of national average is like seven to nine percent. I'm pretty sure, no offense, that it's like, I'm not gonna give a seven, nine percent.
No, that's what I'm saying.
So if we give around nine percent, we're still going to be lining.
Well, yes, no, but let's just say we're getting three percent, because that's the figure for scroll mountains before. And this year went up to six. Next year, balance is out, when we get to three, we have to get us back up to six.
I definitely trended the, the national average, it hasn't been below five percent the last. Six years.
I agree. I mean, it is.
So if we do.
Ten to twelve last year.
Same question to no one. Uh, if we put in the more higher level and we may get three occurring or whatever, or is that? Even if we go default, it will still occur.
Correct.
Okay, because that's a budgetary.
Once the fact is a provision, and we have the word correct, it can come, it may happen, it was, and it comes proven. Even if it were default, it would be part of the fault, but it has to be approved by the board.
So the only way to make that yearly is for it to be approved enough.
Well, we can put it, we can put a call in, in. Maybe a made, I don't know, I don't know. Whatever the background, I don't know that this world.
I, I think if the wording, you know, if the wording said that minimum toward minimum three percent, whatever it was. With this, right, obviously, I think the. The, the minimum that is in that, uh, carried per se, with that, I don't know what's.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
And then say we have a high year where we were trying to go seven percent, and then the budget committee says, no. The minimum is three, compromise, we're gonna cut it down to four and a half or five. They have the authority to do that, but they couldn't cut it, the mandatory three that's in there. But essentially, when you negotiate the heating contracts, or the voters do it, you know, depending on what the wording is, how the duration. It would go, uh, I got, you know, there's our plus and stuff like that.
Okay, let's go.
Basically, we can. Probably have a different way to do it, just leave it to the fact that you're gonna go for a lot of the part. First, it's not like we're called, you know, we can talk about.
Except for traditionally obligation.
Yeah, if you get the Cola fund and this year's going and passes, don't you need that budget to be prepared for the pass?
Oh, exactly.
Yeah, because.
Except it doesn't, right? Because it says a minimum of two percent. So you're making a procedural, you're making a procedural award, not a, I just hear.
Correct.
So if then maybe a procedural, setting a minimum of two percent forward, then the budget really should have a two percent Cola in it, if that's minimum. Or whatever have decided it should go into the operating budget. So it depends on how you work the work. If it's a procedural, then it would be moving forward, which would mean they voted for it, it would go in the budget. But if they, so when weird circumstances, the people don't vote for the work or a call, but then the operating does get approved. Then we wouldn't be able to get a Cola in it, even in the budget. So.
Goes back to the theory that you care for the question you asked, but you may not want the answer.
So then we will need, my will make it the minimum of Cola, five to two percent.
I agree, because I've been looking, listening to all the partners coming in, they.
They're going to do sport, and do sport, and then add another two or three to the budget. I assume that's what we are going to.
Right, assuming that that's rated, it should be in there.
And then that might have to be set previous to our budget leaving the budget.
So we now have a Cola.
Maybe not, if there are other assets, then we, you guys have to be able to, you guys can know what to budget for us and follow.
I said, this is the one I have considered, three percent, we have a conversation. And the budget committee put in three percent Cola. Thirty percent, and that's, is that the six percent or which, which overrides that?
Uh, the budget is three based on this, we're going to get this, we're going to thirty percent guilty rate.
Or whatever, have, have asked it to minimum, right? So we would say minimum three percent of Cola moving forward for the needs of the town to ensure whatever. And so we put in whatever was allowed and was recommended for the Cola this year. So let's say you said, okay, three percent is a normal condition, three is toxic, we should be looking at maybe. Of four, five, or six percent Cola because of cost of living. We would put it in our operating budget. And that. So it would be, the question we put in would still be on the off.
So if the, if the warranty of the passes, but the budget does not. So we can fix it in the budget, that's really important, but three is guaranteed to pass. We will guarantee to move forward to the project, but the other three percent is not.
Right.
So if they don't have. And then you got six percent in the budget total of the Cola, not six and two. So that's what, it's not working on the job, it's what I know about.
It's a risk, I should, should record in the budget cap, this three percent not be added to the budget this year, not being minimum three percent forward in subsequent budget areas.
Correct, that's why the minimum is going to be put in, because what we're going to do is have a base in the warranty, so the man who happens to have subsequent budget is, goes to fall.
But I, I do think, I do think the cost of living should be included in the proposed budget, because. If, if you try to do a warrant, just completely add it, I think you need to understand what the real numbers would be, and I, I do think that. Unless like market, in order to retain employees, there has to be cost of living, because. I, I said, you know, the public sector, when times are good, the public sector never keeps up. But when times get tough, everyone's like, oh, you guys have a retirement system that, the judge's legislation changes every couple of years, I mean, without any choice on it. And the, the public sector never keeps up, and the benefits that the public sector used to enjoy compared to the private sector are not even close to the, the midst of the thing they are.
And, and part of the reason for the other. There were reasons that over the last twenty years plus, we have not been at Cola. And that's why we went so far behind on the way, because one of the reasons. And. The bottom line is the budgetary, you know, most likely, I don't know about this.
I agree, I agree.
It's.
Well, it's. Right, um, as.
I would say, I agree, it is nice to have Cola, it's built every all the time, that's why I support that law. Is a benefit, a benefit package. We definitely said, you're good, in the public sector, that I still, uh, you get the next top of new means and, um, you know, the means. You get a raise, or you get a contract, my basis is a two percent cost of living. And then the next year is two point five stat, and then the next year, you're back to a two percent cost of living. So you're gonna be careful to draw the, including there, example, they get a little percentage of two point five. Not over, very far, you used to be contract last year. And you're probably, you know.
Ten years of the cost of living and none of payers.
Yeah.
Because in the national.
So it does prove, you're gonna be careful, you suffer seven percent of that. You got the table, that's why I think it should be worked properly with the minimum. This way we keep, we maintain, we know what some people get some. If not, we get seven percent.
Right, but it's, that's what you do this, when we do our budget, and I will check the state and see. Or I have somebody else checking the state and see.
I still think we need to raise the three, and lose the.
Well, let's. Let's decide that after we talk the state and see what. They say the wording needs to be, because the wording need determine what we want to present.
And technically, twenty twenty-two, but it had a three percent. So if they.
That's why I'm telling you whether we order from tomorrow. That's why, why we're taking out the voters and not doing the same thing as much earlier.
It would be quite, we get, we get your fraud. Right, that's why it's gay.
Yeah, and then this way, it would be, it's definitely a cost of living.
Though, hey, it's a cost of living, I think that's why we will limit this budget to show that, and the, the. The warranty, it's moving forward in subsequent budgets, that our employees will be, you know, getting no three percent. But there is up to a cap that can be recommended by the most selective budget committee to afford up to a minimum asking three percent.
And if that's, if that's your step, what about the years that the cost of living comes down?
That's what I'm bringing up.
Then you still get, you know, the three percent is still get the rest of the money anyways?
I mean, I mean, I mean, how many, historically, I, I definitely hear everybody met.
What it does, I mean, not very accurate, but that's, but that's why I'm saying, if it's got a maximum on it now. Then we could say, cost of living went down this year, so you're talking three percent or whatever.
But I, I'd say, let's say, we just have maybe a ten percent cost of living, or obviously not, you can afford a ten percent. So there never been a hole in those years where it's over the top, you cap it, you cap it. And so remember those years where, okay, yeah, maybe cost of living went down one percent, there's a rate of three.
Right, I'll talk to the state and see.
They're getting three percent of Cola, plus they're getting their raises, plus they're getting, um, bleeding this department.
It's not, it's not.
There are other raises that go up other than catching up with the.
Yeah.
Now, that's not.
And so there's, other than the paid performance, does the mechanism place them getting?
But in fact, some employees have dropped out. You know, they're, they're to the point that.
And there's, one of the, I think items that can benefit the committee issue is putting the objective clause. So that when someone does cap out because of thirty, forty years of service, there's a, a stipend that's paid on her service there.
Actually, is that what?
I don't know, I don't know, it's a budget, so I don't know if that's in here.
No.
That's, I didn't think that. We have.
I don't know, that's a.
I don't, you have that here.
We gotta, we need to prepare our meeting, and the budget people, not thirty. So that's.
Yeah, one of the.
I, I, I just saw what the private agency, you know, I don't know that, I, I just saw.
I think there's, there was some conflicting information, because it has, some of them putting, um, increases and raises in there. And there's others, and some of them did not.
That's, that's.
Oh, sorry.
So. We're going to, I think, we're going to go, I think, we're gonna get my capital. We have to get it for me, because that's the senior. Yeah, that can't be right.
No.
Like, yeah, no. So it's in there all the time.
Cola.
Cola was a little change. That's this in here.
Don't.
Right, so I think it's a budget purposes. Of course, the move along with it is that, so you have the information, you have the budget, but they give you three percent quote. Which is three percent to everybody, you know, be part time, full time, etc. Yeah, three to seven percent, whatever exists in here, which will have to add that in also.
I can do part of the, I can do the.
I can't do.
Part of that did not put any raises for your.
Well, the next question, the other question that came out, we weren't sure, is that. In the line item for sales for this, the next year, did they put in any increases or, or sales, or any employees? In, I don't know, the executive. So it could be difficult, right? But this is the question, the budget committee doesn't know that. Um, the. I figured where to go with that, and I could ever in there, pick your name, but, but I think that. I'm talking about the other, the property manager, I don't think they're paying, and they're going for. The next year, it's gonna be, Candace is the only one, she just changed her budget, put in five percent. For her people. In her. Shower line.
I wish you'd listened, please do, please put it, please put it in.
Please do this better, until they have, please?
Yeah, my, my talking to Joel's, that, that my understanding is, was that I asked him a question. projected salary, just next year, he said no.
Okay, what it is, there is. Does Dr. Jones have a way to lead from his T F staff performance to keep people there? Let's say for everyone I know, it's the contract of ones. For the people who are in the, they get out of the fish cat, they're not, they got. He also put in Cola, but I think last year, then it went through yours, they get a month. I was trying to do a full back.
Which, I mean, I don't, it's not those, I think that should be, um, I don't think. I don't think we should get into, just my thinking, that we should get into treating one department differently than another. Because we're all that, we should use the staff, and, you know, I think, I, I think that's a great retention system, and it's good for Joel, if we're getting a pass. I think it should be the same for highway, it should be the same for the police, and the fire.
And brings the. That was impressive.
Now, it's probably. So we need to check Joel's, to check the wings, not anything, because it's just, doesn't mean it's right or wrong, the budget committee doesn't know about these things, and that's the thing.
We don't know.
It's not, in one case, we don't do that, in the other scenario, it was a better. When it comes up to the budget committee, and the committee's changed, you're going to put in five percent. For three D. Is that, it's not consistent. Nobody else can tell me, no.
Well, when you. I think we still have a lot of rules there, because somehow, this community came up with the private data, we must draw the ball. I can't believe they don't do anything if the race is expected.
Well, I think there are big reasons that fire, highway, and police all get paid raises.
I assume that's anything under twenty-five dollars. Full time. So, fire, they may.
No.
Well, we're.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Um, nineteen.
Okay, so they need to raise it.
Two dollars.
And then we're talking about a color raise, and then we're talking about before raise. So, so it's just.
My assumption is maybe exactly what's going to get like other companies.
We just want to end up all the way, and then all of them sound like the same.
Right.
And, 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 Kim. My mission is here because she is so, she convinced her lady to talk about it, and people said that bottom house, and they put it, or she girl, the government, and put it for one of the people for next year. I'm talking about, and so we're done. So now she's got five percent there, I guess.
So if that sounds like this is what you're gonna do.
Well, we know, or, or to listen to, we said, we select this, we're going to go only at least on the one line. Anytime we said we're going to have a paid performance in the selectives budget.
Am I correct in that?
Yes.
And have you done, we're just talking about Cola, so we have paid performance in the selectives budget, but the Cola is an issue. So we can only go to three percent if we're going to stay in the.
And I think this, it, it's gonna be a tough sell no matter what.
You're.
And if it is not, if you have to select where in the budget committee, it will not pass. If they think they're a percent, if, if both of these boards cannot articulate that we feel this is appropriate. If the employees of the town, and the community, and the services that we provide, it will not pass, not, not unless we can, uh, you know, apply this to my kind of. And, and now, even if it comes in a number that's very dumb or something, swallow. If you have a, you find, you find words that are both in support of that. And can clearly articulate why, I, I think it's something that's still able to happen. Um, but if, if people are all over the place on it, can't read it, or whatever.
I think right now, budget committee sitting there with some inconsistencies and trying to figure it out, trying to care the budget for a change.
From the budget committee, what is it, do you have a percentage that you guys have talked about, that says, this is tough, it's slow, but I think we can sell.
I mean, I would have a full one, of at least four percent. It's probably three, four percent, yeah. And also build in a raise, which the selectmen have decided, well, the town rates, it should be, you know, a percentage, it should be, but. They need to have built in raise, of course. And whatever we do for the favor of the performance, I can't say that. It's up to, it's up to the select.
So you see three steps, you say Cola.
Raises.
Raises and pays and performance.
We look at it, and we understand, we understand basically the Cola. Because cost of, cost of living, that should be in my, in the budget. People understand why it's there. But people also understand that, hey, you know, town people need a regular raise also.
And I would say, like, so. I've sat on both sides of the union negotiating table, like with the union president, I've sat on the men on the inside. And I'll tell you, if we were gonna, I would rather see pay salary ranges with raise mechanisms in place. More than I would like to see the performance based algorithm in seconds. But you have to, because what happens is that nobody wants to deny, even if they're crap, if they're not doing the job. You would know years of performance evaluations, that said, yeah, they just paid it so that they could get their raises. And then if you have a long term problem employee, you have no mechanism to get rid of them. But jobs can deserve raises, there should be a pay, but you can't, they can't buy it somewhere, but there tends to be a mechanism in place that you can actually do raise salary.
Basically, the performance seems to be nothing that make people mad.
Because unless everybody gets it, it's a little bit annoying.
But that, 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 that's the reason why I was talking about, I mean, you have to pay for the performance, it is. But how they pushing the money, you know, to show a good rate that those people are gonna get something, but in most cases, everybody gets something. You work it all, but I know that.
When, when, unless we have a top man in the economy, it's too subjective, that's where the bottom line, it's too subjective. where the bottom line, it's too subjective.
Let's, let a little session before next Wednesday go through all this and get our, your, your thoughts.
So, I, so we, can we, is there a session in the department, so that we think, is there a consensus that we feel that putting, that planning for the force and possibility and their current budgets is appropriate, is something that we think we can afford with, or is anyone absolutely having any anxiety, or I don't know what happens, we say we'll afford with that, and then behind the scenes, you know, people are suburbing, you know, training.
But then you can have
Yes.
We're, we're, we're fronting out for one percent, one percent.
But
Now, like, from a
They just started, that's consistent, so you have that same number for us, and we're fine, that is, the budget committee can say, okay, here's what they, that, that's their cost.
So we, so just, because we can do that, because we're running, we're running out of time, so
Yeah.
We don't have, um, we, so if we do that, we raise the call up of four percent through odds, and then this would be on full time and part time?
Yes.
Yes.
Just make it work, because we can add the noise into the budget, if we have a working machine, and we can, and take away that, um, and take away the number, I mean, we start at four percent and then have discussions once more, maybe the number, because right now, some of the budgets are running on, we've got to, some of them are, you know, we still have Right, and we also look at the, um, utilities, we're going to be able to break it down.
Just something you said, I'm sure everybody agrees with what she said, she said, full time and part time, you're getting the same call up.
Yes.
Because one, like, Kevin always brings up, is that a part-time employee, he's worth of one hour, because you're not getting the benefits, full time, full.
And I think, and, I think that should be, that should be set in there, right, they're paying, not necessarily the cost of, everyone should be going up the same rate for the cost of, um, but I don't think, I think when, if, that looks, if there needs to be changes, we, for part time, that should, that should be there separately to, to adjust.
They're, they're constantly using the process.
So, and that's, we've got
And I go for four percent easily.
And, and what's, what did it now, and I, what did we start placing that with?
And we're looking at this, out of this comparison, because it, it seems like there are years that have been found that, you know, employees of different departments should be, be treated differently by the, by the, the part-time, I come along there.
So, that, that, the last issue, just, the model, I think, is that, if you're ready, um, excellent, put in for, they raise this, or they have, well, you may be, everyone put in, and then it's going to grow up, because, you know, to say, we're going to put eight percent in for everybody, I think, so, um,
Also, there's this budget committee's job, so you're actually in that, and, which is
So, what's on the budget, if you have to give a raise, it's important, so the past rise rate, since I started, seventeen years ago, full time, is that if the budget passes in March, we come to the selectmen, we sit down as an employer, we go, nice, okay, mine, three, four, five full timers, full timer, eighty, six percent, we say, wow, there really is a percent, maybe it's five percent, that five percent from March thirty-first, whatever we established, December thirty-first of that year, comes out of the selectmen, but
I tell you, maybe for the performance, not for you.
Then, the next year, there's going to be, but my number from employee eight, and that makes twenty-two, fifty-nine, so, my salary line shouldn't be anything projected other than what they're actually.
Unless you have somebody filled with depressed, we have to pay, and then you should
You're going to hear a lot, a lot of
Other departments will just blanket the word right enough, so if we really think that, then you should put it in your budget, and let the budget committee say no.
Do you want to ask?
You have to, but if you don't put it in there, who else can put it in there for you?
I guess just
If you want, if you want that, performance, and the call up is a raise, then they're fine.
They, but that is, you should say, change the, and that, we need to fix this stuff.
And that, that's the big upside, it's a lot of, you need to reach the department, so if I put my budget ten percent for all nine teams across the board, then that's an objective budget, and that, that affects the other department.
So, when all this started, we were talking, scratching, uh, we didn't, we haven't made, we didn't hear of the names, but, you know, these officers were making this much money, these, and they went down, down the line, you know, from his salary down to the senator, that's what we need, that's what we need, because we need to know who's making what, to say, okay, well, this guy's making, you know, fifty dollars now, I'm going to give him another, you know, except twenty dollars.
Except that's like, now you're on a performance page, and you're asking us to prove something, when I don't know nothing about these guys, and now you're asking the budget committee to say, no, we gave you the raise, because he's already giving fifty dollars, and we don't know anything about what that person does, so why should that be in your name, just like it should be in our, to the paid performance, we're allowing the department to do that, you can't, you can't still
We still need to know whether, um, they're being, are they making?
I think that's, we have, something, again, I, I, and I will say, Joel's got a pretty good job, and tell him, the world's selectmen, his ranges were ten, first five, first four, and, and straight down, he's ranked, no one has that, and, you know, I, I said, five years, twenty dollars, okay, we should have pay agents for minimum max each position.
When I was a police, we, I was on, I went back together, I called, areas on the area, we called it together, you know, to major, because they're liaison to the police department, because we know their status from another near where they made the
Right, we have to also rely on, you know, our head.
Well, that's what we need, our heads, we need to live there.
But it's their
Major. Right, but they need to be in touch with the budget committee that knows what it is.
So, just like, we, we don't know.
So we know whether that is reasonable.
The consistency, we, we, again, we have one department that's put in for that year, for next year, the other department's having, I think, if an apartment had, like, they've got somebody that's underpaid, and they need to be brought up to keep them to reach the matrix of other towns, then you should put that, but
I guess our, we're seeing, we want them, this is probably every, every, every thirty months.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we might have, if not, it was never, it was never that bad a change, so, then, if that's the general consensus, and if we just, wait, just to get off that point, could you keep bringing that up, and, and, you know, we're going to have to pay employees, you know, I expect you, all this, ten, fifteen dollars an hour less in the town, I just don't remember that.
I was actually, you'd say this last one, my years, so, so, and, and, in terms of numbers, um, but if, if you know going forward that, hey, if I'm going to have that, in one of these, I think you should plan for the, but
Now's the time.
And, and, we're, you know, that, hey, so many, so far, no labor market, I have to be trying to, I think, it's not, it's not, it, it, listen, you may throw that, but there's, no
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Because that's, um, so
So, a, a lot of this, the experience that over the years, PD wasn't all money, left for, um, less money, or whatever, you know, fight, fighting for teams trends, there's just less violence, and I think a lot of it was less police officers as well, like Chris said, a lot of it is that, I, when I first joined seventeen years ago, I worked twenty years at forty-five, I could retire with full benefits, now, it's changed to twenty-five, I was kind of middle of twenty-three and a half, so, you know,
And you know, there's a rule, you retire, it's not set, so, you retire, you get a chance, you get overtime, you're going to be waiting to twenty-four shifts, that was great, but now they can get handed in an overtime, and it's not a lot of people who are, you know, so it's, it's not just, like, I think, yes, I think eighteen fifty-four an hour for the entire fighter, when next town, I was thinking twenty-seven, and
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of, hey, like, this more local town, just offered a twenty thousand dollar signing bonus to police officers, they, they get five thousand dollars a year for the next four years, I mean, that's what we're competing for.
So, PD said they're offering a thousand dollar signing
Stay true, stay true, first of all, we're a major bonus now, aside.
So, I think, my thought, the main was, they, they have to put in bonuses, I thought, um, so, so, get this, yeah, you know, you have to do that.
And Paul was actually working on, two thousand, two thousand five, twenty-two, then they went with their rates versus what their two thousand twenty-three rates, versus what the budget rates, I don't think, to see who in there, and that makes sense, I think, they should, Paul was working on that, so I guess, the bottom, here, is, now, Susan's sent out an email, a little, a little, a little, telling them that they have, and how we were, we have specific people that they, should we get a name, or should we issue that, that
So this is a paid performance?
Uh, it's like, we're, 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 keep in mind, not paid performance, so if you're going to say, it's going to be five percent raise, but it's going to get three paid performance that may, you know, be part of
Also, on, like, the call up is totally second from paid performance.
Yes, but, three second things, call up, paid performance, and raise.
But, so, when we know that, we can, hours that are absolutely inappropriate, what people deserve, what they should be making, in about fifty years, but the board, they come into eye, and the board is going to shut down, and maybe the fall, a lot of stuff will, you know, and, you know, and, versus, and I do not, not perfectly, not impossible, right, it, it, yeah, I would love to make it memorable to have, and what they should be making, but, that's not, that's not the fact.
And I'll check with the state about the R performance, and state that is, that I can, I can, I can, I can
Police station, you could use a first response, I don't know, office staff, or, I'm, I'm not sure, I don't
They say, you think you could use a brand name now?
You definitely could, possibly.
So, we're going to do that.
Um, I would almost say that, as all the people say, we don't get to go in the world, I really do, it's going to be a tough sell, I think.
And then, once, once
So, I mean, if, if we have this group that we need to match out, rather, it's for you, and, and, you're doing here, so there's no, you know, back change is not going on, but
All those informations, what the, what, I don't know, I can do that, but it's time is running, or, just, they're meeting to be assembled, so I got a few more, to do, it's not, it was decision day, and anybody who worked in the, it was decision day.
Do you have anything else on your list?
A wide So, if, I'm, 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 my suggestion is, we have the updated sheet, bottom minus three, five hundred, just to tell them.
Five hundred?
Six hundred and sixteen dollars, three hundred and ninety-four, is that right?
There you go. What's happening with this?
Five hundred and two thousand.
There's, there's
I'm just making
There's a, not, not, not
Four days, and he's
I'm, I'm
The championship.
Anyway, uh, our, 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 we have, we have, we have, we have, we have after that.
Our, that's, uh, yeah, and, 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 sometimes, uh,
So
That is
There was, that's, my opinion, I think that, uh, I think, Richard's checking, I'm on the reverse before, they're all, whatever, you know, that was something, is there, other my other suggestion, the bottom, is that here, is that we have a lot of items, in the bottom, if you're, they need to fit into this vote, and I, I think we should, I can send a note out to the department, all right, and hopefully, they, they, hopefully, they're not going to, now, to say, you know, we are young, we're confused, and, we're, we're not known, we're, said, I also to say, it's what you need, but if you do this, whatever, because it's accepted, it's, it's simple, you know, it's, it's, again, we have a question that, you know, not, one day, you, you know, two hundred thousand dollars, it's not, it's not
That's fine, I asked the question, like I said, they, they knew, digitized the records, for example, was an estimate.
It's, uh, it's not done yet.
It's based on per page, and they estimated how many pages we have, and we've added a lot to that, so, that could go to two hundred, uh, still three hundred, now, but, but I'm just, that's a real lot, but, but, it's just, my suggestion would
I, I think what you, you made the point, and there is something that we can still pull off, the whole budget, without actually, that, 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 that's a huge, huge thing, huge, and you can get some of that upgrades for, for the pilot, and that makes sense, to drive to the
The other thing that's not in here at all, but like, there is two thousand, there is four, if we start having providing water systems for a lot of these people, you're talking about tremendous amount of money, that, because with all this money, whatever that, then it's going to come all about to its employees.
Well, we have a ten year spend, and we also
That's what I'm saying, we have, we have two years, right, twice like five, or?
Yeah, I, 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 I
We don't really want to, we want to make sure we're preparing now, this budget, it's, we have to, we're going to take this, and, 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 and how do you do that, and try, I mean, right now, um, we're, I'm pretty, pretty, right
And people are going to be voting motion, I mean, that, that everything costs, or that we do, and people may not care about our expectations for anything that we propose for, it just might be, no, 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 no.
All right, let's let this go along, I think, judgeable is, let the department say, if all, if, 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 we're able to, like, put it on that, see, that's a, two questions, we're going to, but, this kind of, uh, landfill money, that, we've spent a lot of, we need to, because we're running out of power, everyone, in these days, you know, and if we go to the fall, that, we've spent all this money, then what will it be? So, those fifty years comes out and says, you've spent a hundred thousand dollars on water systems, those are the things, I have, if you want, and, 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 then I would have a meeting, a report session, or, you know, the budget committee is, is, is working on, on, maybe, we don't want to be sitting here, sitting there, in, going back to what's, 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 what's
And if we all need more meetings in December, that we're going to have to
I'll, 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 of course, with the budget commission, and, and then it suggested what, to, read with the selectmen, that, that, either, the selectmen's meeting, or the budget committee meeting
But we need to
Maybe, 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 so So, are we, are we trying to have a session prior to, I'm saying, can we figure that out tonight, because I'm, we're really, we're just, Monday, Tuesday, next week?
That's right.
Because this is all, next, next week. I would go for five, it's, surprise, well.
What would you do?
But we, 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 but we,
No, I'm just, 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 I'm No, I'm just, 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 I'm Just like
Can we do whatever, and do that, maybe?
I would
And just to put a record on, we're thinking about that, as December's meeting is moving to
So, we've, we've, we've said, what time, and how you do with the problem, that time you're bothering, you're still
Uh, there's, there's
We've got the
But I have a Monday, and then after, after, it works on me. Yeah, and then, end of the month, maybe, next month, will be the twelfth, the nineteenth, instead of twenty-six, because twenty-six were closed.
So, sorry.
And with that, just to let the selectmen know, we will never leave the twenty-sixth, we won't ever on the second, the thirtieth, we're waiting to procure them.
Encounter.
Encounter, so, we may, if we, 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 if we do steps, and we're going to, to, to
Thirty-five minutes.
So we're looking at, are we looking at seven?
No, nineteen, but we're
I Nineteen.
Nineteen, although we're talking about who loves to go, so.
We, we want, oh, yeah, come try and affect, a little bit at six o'clock.
Do you have a part about getting placed?
Yeah.
And, and so.
And then, and then.
No, that's something I'm talking about.
No, we're, we're.
Is that it? I know you're going online, but we need to solve some problems, over going, I did this for a letter that I would come around this year. The people complaining a little bit about the range, gun range.
Yeah.
And it's a legal range according to the law, and I think that I would take Joel and go talk to people, people where they, they're not supposedly fly, they're flying from the shooting, something, I mean, or they didn't wear the, the, the people in town, and like, they're, they're, yeah.
Obviously, we don't have a lot of, because the issues that we have.
You ready, anything else? Who wants?
Don't even ask, we need some Germany.
Thank you, Jordan. And we'll, we'll thank you.